Whereas the AcuMat County School Board has deeded a closed meeting on this date pursuant to the Birmingham Record vote and in accordance with revisions of the Virginia Freedom Prevention Act and whereas Section 2.1-3771D, the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was considered conforming with Virginia law. Now therefore be resolved that the AcuMat County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which such closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? President carries.
If everyone could please silence their cell phones if they have not already done so, and we're going to stand for the pledge, and please remain stanching afterwards from the silent. Our pledge will be this.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Maybe see. Next, the board of table, all call things.
President.
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 Here.
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 Next up is student recognition, Navy High School.
Good evening. Oh, not on. Good evening. At this time, I would like to ask Mr. Dale Spilker, our welding instructor, and Mr. Austin Work to come forward, please. I'm going to let Mr. Spilker tell you a little bit about what Mr. Work has done. I believe you all might have recognized him. This is his second time coming before the board where he has won another competition. So I'll let Mr. Spilker tell you a little bit about it before I present something.
Just don't put it in pocket. All right, well, as we were, I mean, I feel like we're here just about a month ago or so, maybe less, but as you can see, Austin took second place at the Project Manufacturing National Maritime Welding Competition. This was held at Ferris State University, which is in Michigan. Project Manufacturing is a company, not necessarily a company, but an organization that promotes the defense industry by allowing students to do these types of projects. Austin advanced through our district competition, which that is incorporating high school level competitors as well as college level competitors. And at the national level, it was the same. And he deeded out fifteen other competitors. I think it was actually fourteen, right?
Thirteen.
Thirteen that showed up. So thirteen other competitors throughout the nation. And he earned second place. The individual that won first place was the individual that won last year. So obviously, he had some experience. So I chalk this up as obviously when Austin walked away with a $5,000 check for himself to buy tools and stuff like that. And I'd also like to add in that Austin plans on attending, well, is attending Newport New Shipbuilding's The Apprentice School here in September, correct? So obviously, I'd like to take a minute to give him some recognition.
Congratulations. Great job.
So I know this is not as good as the $5,000 he was awarded for the national win, but on behalf of AcuMat County Public Schools, we would like to present you with a certificate for outstanding emeritus work in welding. We really appreciate all you've done for AcuMat County. I'm really putting this on the map. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can you speak to shore or help?
Good evening, and I don't want you all to be scared when you see I've got four up here. I promise this is a short presentation, but when you see four of us that are passionate about what we do, you're thinking, oh, we'll be here all night, but Dr. Mill already told me keep it short, Jeanette, tonight. So thank you for letting us come. Thank you for letting us present the multiple partnerships that we have, and I'd like to welcome you to the shore and AcuMat County Schools. And I'd like to introduce the group that is with me. I've got Dr. Scott Wooplin, who is head of the dental program, which you all are all very familiar with. I've got Dr. Joan Lingan, who has been very responsible for the telemedicine program. And then I've got Kim Savage, who has been responsible for working on the athletic trainer to get that partnership there. So, let me see. I've got the map up here, and I wanted to let you know Eastern Shore has thirteen sites up and down the shore for access. We are in three of those sites in the schools with you all. That is at Matomkin, where we are here now, and we have a dental and we have a telehealth program. At Pumpeetig, we have the dental program, and at Nandua, we have the dental program that is there. So with these school sites, we also are in every school in AcuMat County. Not a physical site, but we do what's called a TOPS program. It's the traveling oral preventative program. And for some of you all here, you may know the MASH years and years ago. Some of you may not. I remember it, but it's where you carry the equipment over your back and you went in and were under a tent. Well, that's kind of what we do at the other schools that don't have the physical site. We take an X-ray, we take the chair, and we go in there, and we're able to screen the kids. And if they have concerns or something that needs done invasive in the dental department, what we'll do there is we will send them to one of the three physical units we have or to our Atlantic Community Health Center that we have. Just to show you the partnership that we have had with you all, in Pumpeetig, we opened up in 1995, and we're still going. Matomkin here at 2000. The TOPS, we started in 2012, and at Nandua, metal in '22. Our telehealth is the newest that I believe we came last year about this time to get it off the ground, and we started that in April, kind of as a pilot program before this school year starts this year coming up. Dr. Lingan will give you some stats on that. Well, when we were here, Mr. Lawrence approached us and said, like, AcuMat and Matomkin with our Kickitang would love to have the same program. So what we decided was that parents could actually bring the students here to be seen. And then the principal said, well, you know what? I'd really like it for the staff here. So we started seeing the staff here. And the purpose behind all of that was to make sure that the less time the students and even faculty were out of school. So at this time, I would like to turn it over to Scott Wooplin, that he's going to tell some stats for you with the dental program.
Thanks, Jeanette. I am especially grateful for our partnership and excited to share what we were able to achieve during this last academic year. So those three schools where we have the dental unit, those are like two-chair little dental offices, and the community is really taking advantage of it. It's great. Parents can have their children's care attended without needing work or providing comprehensive care in those units. And so with those three school units, we were able to provide 3,615 visits. And what I'm really excited about is seventy-eight of those visits were for children with special health care needs. And those, it's very difficult for those children to access health services. We are pretty much open all the time, whether school's in session or whether it's in recess. And we provided 747 days of service in those three school units. Sorry. And one of the neat things that we should be really proud of is the quality measure. We look at children that are six to nine years old. That's when their first adult molar, their big chewing tooth comes in, and we have sealed 77% of the children's molars, and their state average is like 53%. That little protective covering is awesome protection against cavities. When we put those sealants on teeth, the children have like a 70% less chance of getting cavities. And that's what it's all about, is just trying to keep these little guys healthy so they can come to school without mouth pain and, you know, prepared to learn, and perfect segue for Dr. Lingan.
Thank you very much. So again, when we were here last year, I did talk a little bit about the equipment we're using for our telehealth visit. Just as a reminder, we do have these units that allow us to take pictures of the eardrum in the throat. We have our nurse embedded, Tessa up in the right-hand corner. She actually coordinates the care. And thank you very much for the lovely space that was provided to us. As you can see, we've got that outfitted and can have up to four students at a time. And you can see that we're saving, we've been saving about thirty patients a month. And we certainly are hoping that as this next school year comes out and that we really do a little bit of education with the parents that that program gets used more. Again, the goal is to be able to see that student, have that remote visit be done so that by the time it's over, if we've been able to diagnose a problem that we can prescribe for, that prescription sent into the pharmacy, parent can come by, pick up child, go to pharmacy, get that medication, school knows, well, we're ready, and we'll make that process as seamless as possible, minimize the amount of time that parents are out of work as well as students are on school. So we thank you for that.
Okay. And least but not last, or last but not least, I'm here just to kind of touch base a little bit about our newest partnership with the school system. So early in spring, we got a call from Lori Blair saying, hey, we've got this really great idea. We'd like to hire an athletic trainer, but they're going to need to have a physician oversight person. What do you think about that? And we said, well, we always say absolutely we can do that. So Lori and I have been working together with her team and with Dr. Lingan, and so we have developed the memorandum of agreement. We've talked about, you know, getting the policies and procedures ready and the standing orders ready for air physician who's going to be doing the oversight to work through and approve, and we're working on some of the flow processes. But the idea is that, you know, we want our kids to be healthy and all the things that Dr. Lingan and Dr. Wooplin said, and this is just another way of ensuring that, you know, they receive the best health care possible. So we're really excited to meet the athletic trainer and to kind of get this ball rolling here. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for any of us here? Yes, ma'am.
First of all, thank you for sharing. My one question is with regard to the MOU with regard to the athletic trainer. My question comes from the fact that prevention is included here. Can consideration be given to our sports physicals being covered?
Dr. Lingan, yes.
So we are working with the providers to do the sports physicals at school, but an athletic trainer themselves is not going to be able to sign off on that sports physical. But we'll work with the schools to get the students in, and we're considering spots in our schedules to do those.
So you already have that in place, or is that something you bring?
Yeah, we do. Right. And the other thing is, of course, that there has been a little bit of an extension on that. So instead of them being good for twelve months, those sports physicals are now good for fourteen, which has actually helped a whole lot. So we were having those issues with those, you know, weird deadlines with when the sports school ends and if the kid gets seen in the summer, and so that has helped a lot. But, yeah, we've always got spaces in our schedules that are set aside for sports physicals.
Can a parent call Royal Health and set that up with you?
Absolutely.
So just a quick follow-up. I mean, I'm certainly, I don't want to be a comment. I'm aware that there's a possibility, and I was actually asking in terms of could we consider that 100% of the sports physicals be covered through? Sometimes it's a challenge for our students, in my understanding, to get the sports physicals.
Right. We've been, we've been working with, with schools. I know we've set some time aside. You know, we certainly will, you know, make every effort to make sure that we've got everybody covered and we've got spaces available. We've actually got a new pediatrician starting at our Atlantic office this month and a new pediatrician starting at our Eastville office in July. So I think we should have plenty of availability to get kids in for those physicals.
But if you don't, you let us know, and we'll make sure that they get in there. Ah, young one.
I just want to say thank you all so much for diving into the athletic training pond with us. We'll figure this out as we go, but it's really something that's been needed in this division. I've been advocating for it for years, and I'm so glad that it's finally up and off the ground, and hopefully it'll go smoothly, and we can build and add more trainers. So just really thank you, thank you for that. On behalf of all of our athletes and their parents, thank you.
Well, thank you for all you all do too. Say thank you.
Next up is the approval of the minutes.
I'm Sarah Moon. Have we approved the minutes for 06, 03, 2025, and 06, 07, 2025 meetings?
Second.
Motion second to approve the minutes for the two meetings. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let me skip down to the right to the left. We'll take care of all of those things after the second closed session. So we'll do the grant awards. Do you have a motion to move that to the actor? So I'll make a motion that we vote on these items when we come out of the second closed session, since we did not get to the end of the first closed session.
Right. Item 7.01, 07.11, on the second. Don't, I'm sorry. Hold it, hold it.
Six, 02, bring 608.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Grant awards.
Okay, at this time, at this time, I'm going to have the people who have written the grants just walk you through each of the grants. They've done a quick slide for each one. They won't make you read through all of it, but it is attached on the agenda.
So Katie Farrell, she first.
Good evening, board members. So I'm going to start in just a few minutes while we get the PowerPoint going over Title One, Part A, and Title Four. Just while I browse one of the PowerPoint, I'll go ahead and get started. You have the grants, I believe, in front of you. Title One, what we do is with all the titles, we start with the level funding that we received last year, and then when the actual funding comes out in the fall, we amend our application and allocation. So I'm starting our Title One grant this year with $1,853,842.24. Enlisted here, you can see several of the key items. This is not limited to everything, but you can see what we spend these funds on. And starting on page 12 of the grant, you can see the itemization of the funds and the breakdown by object code. Some of the items, we use these funds for Title One reading and math teachers, literacy instructional assistants. Some of our STEM lab IAs at the elementary level are funded with Title One, and some of them are funded by Title Four. We currently have a curriculum coordinator. I've included more funds for educational field trips. We have instructional resources for our Tier Two and Tier Three instruction. Of course, your Tier One instruction is your instruction for everyone, and then you have supplement and intervention for students that need remediation and interventions. We also have STEM and robotics equipment, different technology resources, and print subscriptions. A key part of Title One requirements is parent and family engagement events and activities and resources for our parents. We have stipends included for when we have our school-level teams meet to do our comprehensive needs assessment or any data analysis. We can pay them after school, after-school hours to come in, and we have a plethora of professional development included in Title One.
Okay. Katie, does, did Title One, the amount of Title One increase or decrease?
So this is actually the amount that we ended up with last year. That's what they require us to start with. Our new allocation has not been released, so that typically comes, we submit our grants July 1, and typically September, October is where we get our actual funds.
Thank you.
Any other Title One questions? Okay, so Title Four, what Title Four, Ms. Smith, if you don't mind, do your individual. What Title Four is based on is safe and healthy students, well-rounded students in technology. And, that's okay, I'll keep going. And some of the items that are in Title Four, you don't see it right in front of you, but that's okay. I just wrote it, so it's fresh in my mind. Several of the things we use these funds for are two of our STEM lab instructional assistants, greenhouse construction. This past year, we just recently purchased for all of our elementary schools greenhouses. Mr. Bennett and his crew will be working this summer to get those up and running, so I have additional funds in this coming year to buy more resources for them. We have STEM and robotics. This year, we've also set aside additional funds for our schools that are considered TSI, targeted support improvement based on their subgroups and accreditation. So I've set aside certain funds for that as well. And again, on this particular grant, starting on page 17, you can see the itemized list of things per object code. Two things that we use these funds for are Girls on the Run, which was quite successful. I believe that club presented to you maybe at your last meeting at Pumpeetig, and that program has grown extensively from last year, and we're excited this coming year, we're hoping to expand that to Boys on the Run. We had a meeting just a few weeks ago with the head coach and some other key teachers that are excited about participating, and we're hoping to get a survey out soon to see if we could, how many people would like to coach that, and have a club for our young men as well. Any questions about Title Four? All right, thank you.
Hello, everyone. Title Two, the Title Two grant is intended for us to help support educating our teachers and administrators and supporting effective instruction in the classroom. Typically, we use Title Two for things like a couple positions, like this year, the funding was a little bit lower than last year. So right now, the only two things we have in the Title Two grant are funding for two positions, a lead teacher mentor and a special education teacher mentor. And if we get more funds, sometimes they release more funds, and we plan to use those for things like professional development for our teachers and administrators. We have about a little more than $173,000 in that title grant.
Any questions? Thank you. Karen Taylor?
All right, again, I'm actually going to present for Ms. Teresa Vera this evening. She was not able to make it. So for Title Three, Part B, her current grant funds are $86,462. She has budgeted an average of $20,000, which goes towards the after-school tutoring program and summer programs for L students. $27,000 goes towards the database program for L teachers, who are going to write the actual L plan, accommodations, and give instructional strategies. $20,000 goes towards the Lexia program that is specific for L students, which is different from what we use with non-L students. And it's definitely proven this year to show significant growth in our L students for reading. And the rest of the funds is typically used for professional development, parent engagement events, and instructional materials. Okay, for Title One, Part C, for Ms. Vera, the current grant funds are $156,000 plus she has a consortium of $21,450. With those funds, the average of about $141,000 goes towards salaries for the summer migrant program, which actually will start next Tuesday, the 24th, and it runs till the end of July, and it's five days a week, full days. And the estimated $40,000 goes towards professional development, field trips for L students, three migrant parent events, instructional materials, backpacks, and hygiene kits. Any questions on those, Phil? I'll try to answer.
Thank you.
Okay, and last, Title Five. So currently, the grant is $171,762. Budgeted for the upcoming years, an average of about $50,000 towards the curriculum for their salary, stipends for non-instructional time to work on our school's comprehensive needs assessment and school improvement plans, and stipends for mentors and coaches and fringe benefits. We did have to put a little bit more in towards our stipends for mentors this year, and we know we're going to need to do it again for next year. They have been very, very good to our new teachers and helping them get acclimated. An average of $16,000 towards our working lunch, the new teacher academy, membership for the CERN to continue professional development with William &amp; Mary, and our new membership with the Virginia School Consortium for Learning, which also provides additional professional development for our teachers, and then also any professional development consultants that we could bring in for our teachers. $20,000 is budgeted to reimburse courses for hard-to-staff areas, counselors, and get additional bill enrollment credential teachers. $54,000 is budgeted towards reimbursement for licensure exams such as a practice test, CTE provincial test, and to reimburse for travel registration for professional development. And lastly, $32,000 is budgeted to assist teachers with literacy supplies and materials to assist with remediation and enrichment, which primarily goes to our non-Titel Ones schools. Also for STEM equipment and science equipment supplies to continue school improvement for the science SOLs, as well as our capital and STEM labs.
Question? Thank you. Next up is regulation exhibit updates, first reading.
First up, we'll have Ms. Karen Taylor present on the fees regulation.
I want to go back again. One of the biggest things we've looked at this year, talking with administrators and teachers, is having more consistency when it comes to fees and dues across the whole division, as well as we also heard from the board members with some of the fees that are being charged. So this is the proposed fees, which if you see, none for elementary and only for the pay and rental for middle school. The rest primarily is for high school. And we did take out so that Level One art would not have a fee, it would be for Level Two and above, as well as the pracs would only be for Level Two and above. And we looked at it compared to several other school divisions, which our fees and dues are way below quite a few other school divisions. I was really kind of surprised to see what other school divisions charge students, including charge them to play sports. So obviously, we did not go that route. I will say for our trade in industry, it's not really a fee that they pay as much as they're a required supply these students have to have, but it's theirs to keep forever. So those are fees that our students would need to pay if they want the instructor to buy, otherwise our instructors give them a list of things that they need to get, such as welding. You're required to have a specific helmet. It's your choice if you want to spend it $25 or $200 or I mean, maybe $300 helmet, depends on how stylish you want it to be. But again, it's something that is required for the class, something they keep forever, and hopefully, as you all, I think I've seen in our trade programs, these are kids who typically do this after graduation.
First up, we'll have Ms. Karen Taylor present on the fees regulation.
I wanna go back again. One of the biggest things we've looked at this year, talking with administrators and teachers, is having more consistency when it comes to fees and dues across the whole division, as well as we also heard from the board members with some of the fees that were being charged. So, this is the proposed fees, which as you see, none for elementary and only for the pay and rental for middle school. The rest primarily is for high school. And we did take out so that Level I art would not have a fee, it would be for Level II and above, as well as the pracs would only be for Level II and above. And we looked at it compared to several other school divisions, which our fees and dues are way below quite a few other school divisions. I was really kinda surprised to see what other school divisions charge students, including charge them to play sports. So, obviously, we did not go that route. I will say for our trade and industry, it's not really a fee that they pay as much as they're required supply these students have to have, but it's theirs to keep forever. So, those are fees that our students would need to pay if they want the instructor to buy, otherwise our instructors give them a list of things that they need to get, such as welding. You're required to have a specific helmet. It's your choice if you wanna spend it twenty-five dollars or two hundred dollars or I mean, maybe three hundred dollar helmet, depends on how stylish you wanted to be. But again, it's something that is required for the class, something they keep forever, and hopefully, as you all, I think I've seen in our trade programs, these are kids who typically do this after graduation.
Questions?
I don't, um, thank you for sharing this, I understand this was true. Bobby, we've got a safety committee, and we, I don't know if all the team, but we've had some discussion about whether we could consider not having lockers. Could you consult?
Honestly, from talking to the principals, middle school is typically the only time anymore they even rent lockers. We had one high school, I believe, only rented two lockers this entire year. I mean, they're really just not renting those. Not because of the fee. Students really just don't use lockers anymore. We have the locker room as well, but kids really just aren't renting lockers, they just carry their stuff with them. But I am definitely not opposed to two dollars for the PE and three dollars for hallway out. I'd be good if you all want to nix that. Because again, you really aren't renting those, not because of the fee.
I just ask you this, so the schools were collecting, let's say they were collecting a fee for beginning art. So, who now, are we placing the burden of those lost fees on the schools, or are we picking that up?
So, I spoke with Ms. Emily earlier about this when we first started looking at it, and it had been brought up by the board. That's what we did look at, is being able to give additional allotment funds for the Level I of those two programs.
So I know it's a policy, we're supposed to have this, our policies, all these fees, and then in the event that a child cannot pay, there is a form that they can put out to apply for financial aid, a waiver.
You all should have that exhibit, I believe. Okay, yeah, so then do a waiver, so just in case for any of those. And is it recommended that you all wanna do away with the lockers? If so, well...
We, we'll, we'll vote on that next time, Monday. So it's just discussion for tonight.
A question, is the reason that the lockers are not used, is there's none of them taught in through classes? Do you go to lockers?
No, kids, a lot of our textbooks, like especially at high school, they're class sets, so a lot of high school students aren't really carrying books like they used to. In fact, for the new adoption, the teacher can ask again just for class set, they don't, the kids don't need to carry them around. Most of our teachers don't use them on a daily basis, they're more for a resource.
Are the backpacks are very heavy?
Yes. I mean, I will say, middle school, like I say, I think sixth grade is probably the most because of novelty, they're coming up, they're excited. Seventh grade, that's okay, but by eighth grade, even eighth grade, kids don't use lockers. Like, it's, isn't really surprising, the kids are just, I don't know, it's not cool anymore, or, it's still...
You all, would you all like some information from the principals about, thinking back about what would be the ramifications of doing away with a rental, a locker rental thing, and maybe someone could email us that information, so we'll add it for our next meeting?
Yeah, that's their problem. I can't say it won't be a big loss for them, because they're not really...
Right. There might be some other same problem, though.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So next up is our VSBA policy updates.
I have one more regulation.
Oh, okay, one more regulation.
Those attachments will be on the bottom.
Okay.
The update is to GCBV, and that's a regulation R. We have had some concern about leave balances, and so for next year, we will be moving strictly to frontline. And that, moving to that system for the entire staff would mean that we have to update this regulation. And so, we just updated it to, rather than writing out a request, we put the request in frontline. The other change that you will see is on page four of thirteen. Right now, it reads that annual leave must be entered the last workday of each calendar month by designated member. With frontline, what we would do is front-load all of the days for the year, and if we have an employee that leaves our employee before the end of their contract, we would then prorate those days, and it states that the balance would be taken out of their last compensation.
So now we're, VSBA policy updates.
Alright, I promise not to read all the policies to you, but I'm here. If you have any questions or concerns, we did go through and, you know, make the necessary changes in terms of the red lines, and added some language that was optional language that we said we would, one, two, and the third.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I'm not seeing on my board docs the language that was going to be upgraded in policy GCL. If we could just talk about that briefly.
GCL.
The language there should read that the autism training will be given on a every year basis annually, that we train annually.
I just wanted to make sure, because the original language also said that such training is optional, that, and I would like for that to say that the school board requires it.
I believe we worked on that even as late as today, where the language says that we will provide the training yearly. So, it doesn't leave much wiggle room, we'll provide yearly.
Well, just because we provide it, though, doesn't necessarily mean they have to do it unless we say it's required and not optional, is what I'm saying.
I mean, we can certainly look at some of the semantics. Some of this is getting ready to go into state code July 1.
So what we'll do is that, we're gonna do our trainings through a program called Vector, and those are uploaded, and so when you finish the training, you get a certificate. And so that will be one of the required trainings, those are required, and the principals check off on them.
We assign those trainings, so if you're a teacher, you get this, you know, however many trainings, the administrator gets this many, nurse gets this many, and we get to pick which ones they are, and then they have to complete.
We don't get to pick which ones they are, but the state tells us which ones they are.
Going by the state, we would choose the ones that are required by the state, of course. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Hello again. Before we begin with elementary updates, just on behalf of our entire instructional team, we wanna thank our teachers and staffs. Staff, as you know, yesterday, they wrapped up the school year and packed up their classrooms, and hopefully are off to have a little bit of R and R before summer school and other programs start next week after. But we just wanted to say thank you to the entire staff, custodians, Brandon's team, the bus, everyone who works together to make this work. So, thank you on behalf of all of us. Starting off with some elementary updates, I believe Ms. Taylor mentioned a few minutes ago, even though we're wrapping up the year, we've been working the last several months on two new curriculum updates for elementary math and reading. We've gone through the whole adoption process, where we get input from teachers and staff at every school, and we've received all of our ELA materials, all of our literacy materials. We have a few more things coming in this summer, but we've already organized those, we have them ready, we have PD planned. Our reading specialists are doing a lot of work this summer, so that when our teachers come back, they are not bombarded with two new curriculums. And I'm very happy to say we're going with, both curriculums are SAVIS, so it's the same company, so they're not gonna have to be learning two new platforms, we're gonna be learning one platform. So, a lot of curriculum work happening, and will continue through the summer. A few VLA, Virginia Literacy Act, updates. I've shared many of these items with you before. All of our teachers were required, K-8 teachers, to complete one of the four options listed here, and I'm very proud and I wanna thank all of our teachers, they really took this on. One more thing added to their plate, but they completed it and are utilizing those resources in their classroom. Right now, I've done an update since this slide, so right now we currently have fifty-three teachers left that are working on one of those four options, and they knew that they were given until September 2nd of this coming fall to complete that. I've had probably twenty to thirty certificates, stipends submitted this week, so they're coming in fast. So, I appreciate the teachers' efforts on that. Vows testing this year, as you know, is K-3, that extends to grades four through eight next year. So, any students that did not pass their SOL this year in grades three through seven will automatically be required to have a reading plan, and there are other additional requirements for reading plans. So, we'll be working with English teachers in grades four through eight this summer, when they return with some tutorials and more information about what that'll look like. But we've already gathered, Kim, Supora, myself, and Karen have already gathered resources, so when they come back, these teachers have materials to help them with these reading plans. Okay, next up, just going to give you a little bit of information about Mastery Connect. Mastery Connect provides teachers with in-the-moment standard-aligned data. It's an assessment platform that allows them to make instructional decisions based on students' individual needs. Basically, they're gonna have a bank of over a hundred and fifty thousand Virginia SOL-aligned items, where this is gonna save them time, save them resources, save them work, and allow them to put together assessments and a variety of resources to utilize K-12 in their classrooms. So, you'll be hearing more information about Mastery Connect in the near future. Next up, Lexia will be entering year three of utilizing this program. You're familiar with All In Virginia, where our governor recommended several resources to assist our students that are not meeting the benchmark and are not where they are at or where they should be, grade level-wise. So, Lexia was one of those programs. Here's just a little breakdown of what Lexia is, the expectations. It's really based on student need. So, one student may be required to do twenty minutes of a week on this program. Another student might need to complete fifteen minutes a week, based on where they're at and their need. And one important thing is for teacher monitoring progress, to see where student, what roadblocks they're hitting, and to utilize resources to assist them. And the instructional team also meets monthly with our Lexia rep to look over our usage, because we wanna make sure we're purchasing this program, that our students are using it, and it's supporting their needs. The last bullet there, you'll see, last year, Lexia, the purchase order was just a little over a hundred thousand dollars, and we only had to pay ten thousand of that last year because we were given what was called lag money from the state. This year, it's a little different. So, you can see, they are giving us nine hundred and ninety-eight license, which will save us about thirty-five thousand. One thing we did look at, Karen and I met with the rep last month to see our usage, end-of-the-year usage report, and we're gonna use that to determine how many licenses we'll purchase for the next upcoming school year. So, if we had a site license, but the school did not utilize it as much as we purchased, then we will go down to individual site license. And this is just a quick little glimpse, we have Power Up and Core Five, this is our elementary program, and this is just a quick visual, so you can see at the start of K-5, start of the year, and the end of the year. And of course, you're wanting to see more of the darker blue colors, because that's when our students are on grade level, or working above grade level, so that I can show you quickly some progress there. Questions about Lexia? Yeah, I don't have it on here, but we also use CERN, which again is aligned with All In Virginia, and that's a math program. And that's pretty free for the division, through the state. The last thing I'm excited to announce is a program, a resource fair, that I've been working with the YMCA and Ready Regions Southeastern. We've been working on this, this is part of our coordinated enrollment plan, that we work with Ready Regions. If you're not familiar with what this group is, it's basically a statewide initiative where it's, the emphasis is on birth to five, early childhood, making sure all of our children and family have their resources. They need to have them kindergarten-ready and ready to be successful in school. We had our first fair last year, we had it at Department of Social Services, and we surveyed the parents and families and asked, you know, what did they like, recommendations for this year, and one of them was a different location. So, we thought, what better place than the YMCA in Emily, it's right on the highway, a lot of traffic. So, we have, right now, twenty-five plus partners that will be there, will be around the track. All the vendors and community stakeholders will be there, set up a table, and have resources for our families to come and see what, everything we have on the eastern shore available to them, to include rural health, I don't know if they're still here, but they're one of our partners as well. So, again, this is July 12th, range eight, July 19th, ten to two, at the Emily YMCA, and if parking becomes crowded, we will have, Mr. Reader will have one of our buses over at Nandua to transport families back and forth. And I forgot to add, if I may, add one more thing about Title IV that I did not earlier. Musical instruments is one thing I put in the grant this year. I know a few teachers have voiced wanting to update their instruments, so that's also in the Title IV grant.
Just for elementary school?
No, Title IV can serve anything.
Musical instruments for the high school.
And one thing to keep in mind, I know teachers are listening, with Title I, you have to spend all of that money with, or eighty-five percent of that money within the year. With other grants, some of them, you're still working on previous funds, so you have to wrap up those funds first before you start your new funds. So, but that is in the works, and that will be coming in the near future. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm here again. It has really been a great year, and as we are wrapping up things, and looking forward to a new year, just wanna give you a few updates. But first and foremost, I would like to thank you all for taking the time out to allow us to recognize our students the last couple of months at the board meetings, to really show what our students do academically, what they do in their CTE and trade programs. It really is wonderful what kids are doing, and most importantly, what our teachers are doing with their kids, because these teachers put a lot of hours in, after-contract hours. So, thank you all so much for letting us recognize the kids.
We like that, Ms. Taylor, that's the best part.
I do want to sincerely thank each of you that was able to attend at least one of the four graduations this year. They were great events. We had a total of three hundred and thirteen seniors graduate with an estimated two million eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars in scholarships. So, great year again. Our summer programs this summer, we are still doing remediation and SOL recakes, it doesn't really stop for our high school kids, as well as trying to recover for attendance in any courses they may have failed and they need to recover. And we are having that at Shingik High School, they're combined in the middle, Arcadia and our, at the middle school itself, for both the high and the middle, and the Nando High School is hosting it for the middle school and the high school. We are also gonna be piloting this year at the, for the summer program, at Arcadia Middle School, a literacy camp, where the reading specialist and the L teacher have selected thirty-seven students from our newcomer program to do intense literacy remediation with the students and intense vocabulary. So, we're looking forward to seeing how that works out, and that's also part of the Title III grant as well. For our textbook adoption, again, we're like elementary, we've adopted for English, they have already been selected, ordered, and delivered to our middle and high schools. So, the teachers are very quick to break open to the boxes. We want to grow up Hill for middle, Hootman for high school, and that's who they selected. And then for math, we are in the process of getting our SAVIS books for middle and high, that's who they went with. For history, we're on a little bit of a hold for the history textbook adoption, because though they approved the new standards, the state still has not come out with an approved history textbook list. So, as soon as they do, we'll get those choices out to our teacher stations select. But in the meantime, we are already working on professional development with the sales reps to be able to come in and go over the resources that are available that goes with the textbooks. And our teachers need a break, so we're pushing this off until August, when they come back, and that's actually what the teachers requested too, is give us a break. For CTE and Perkins, this is another great upcoming year for our trade programs. All of our trade programs are full, except for only a couple slots for HVAC, a couple slots... slots for carpentry, and a couple slots for computer systems technology. The rest are, although four have a waitlist. So we're very excited to see, again, a great year for the kids to apply for it. For the upcoming year, I will be working on, and I've already started working on it, for the application itself, to apply for three programs. It does take about a year for the whole application process to get done, and part of it is I have to survey students. So I'll be doing that first thing in September when they come back, to see what interest we have in three new programs, masonry, electrician, and barbering. I've had a lot of students come and ask about these programs. I've had parents ask about these programs. So we're gonna send out a survey, which is part of the application. I have to send the data in as well. So I'd like to hopefully get the application in by the first of October, so hopefully after Christmas, we should get an approval denied on those programs and then move forward with what we need to do. Of course, offering, guys, this is the first year, I don't have anything for board approval. The only thing I have is a couple additions that were approved by D O E, which is just adding some courses. We wanted to add some fine arts courses, because some of our administrators said they just need more electives and choices for the kids versus the basics that we've been offering, and also adding some additional foundation and fundamental classes for our average students. Lastly, our aerospace academy. Just to give you all a little update of where we are with that, our goal was to have fifty students this year, to be able to start with a ninth grade class. So then our goal, freshman class, is met that and have a waitlist. We have twenty-five students for Arcadia High School, ten for Shingate High School, fourteen for Nandua High School, and three for North Hampton High School. We did hire, or ODU hired, the educational specialist, which is funded through the grant. The educational specialist works directly with ODU, our director for ODU. They will continue to work on finalizing the curriculum, the summer camp program that will start next summer, finalize authentic projects, which we're working with various partnerships with NASA for those, as well as UVA, ODU, and a couple other partners. And the teach, the educational specialist also plays the role of a teacher. So the teacher will actually be teaching computer science and engineering exploration for next year. To the students, the classes will be taught face-to-face and virtually, to start off with. We also have another teacher who has a credential, who has volunteered to say, "I'll make it work, even if it means giving up my planning period," to be able to teach face-to-face. And very excited to hear that. It's been a lot of interaction from our teachers who want to be a part of this program. So we're real excited with it. Our renovations, you all haven't been in our high schools, you'll see a little bit started this week, but it really hits the ground running on Monday. They really would like to have it done by the end of the month, which I think that's gonna be kinda tight. For the two libraries, Arcadia High and Nandua High, we'll have a room added to it, and then Shingate High, it used to be the old shop room, that's actually getting renovated. So we will have an actual aerospace academy lab. Obviously, it's used for one block for the upcoming year, but eventually it'll be used for all blocks, and we can also use it for other STEM things as well. I do want to thank Ms. Owens for being a huge part of helping me with the aerospace academy, and really very excited to get this up and going for next year. The kids are very excited. So with that, finally, we are working on a governor's office, with the governor's office for a revenue cutting. And we would like to invite each of you for it. It will be held at NASA. We're looking at mid-August. So as soon as I get the final details, I will get that out there, but we really would love for you all to be part of this.
I don't have scissors.
Yes, yes, I'm sure NASA will have it all.
I have a question, Karen. When you were talking about the grants and the one that would be able to add money to teachers in hard-filled positions, is that coming or is that in place now? I'm curious for one, like, Capitalist Teachers Free School.
For the classes, that's actually already in the grant, to be able to get more teachers to get dual enrollment certified. So we've been doing that the last couple of years. It's just, a lot of teachers don't wanna go to that extra for, it's a lot of work, because you have to have not only a master's degree, you have to have an additional eighteen credit hours to be able to meet that credential, and that's almost a second master's.
We've not had a high-level master's for all three high schools, and I think it really hurts the kids to think.
Yes.
Go to college.
Yes, and I think it's not just for Capitalist, for a lot of our dual enrollment classes. I know it's not easy doing it virtually, but I beg and plead aloud for our teachers, especially if I know they have a master's, I feel like they're already halfway there. So they just take those extra classes. At the Region Two meeting that Ms. Farrell and I went to, one of the things that was presented to us as a partnership with Christopher Newport University, because Newport News and several of the other Region Two divisions said they have the same exact issue with finding dual enrollment teachers, although Newport News may feel a little better when they said they had a total of twenty dual enrollment teachers. We have more. So, we're actually doing really well with our dual enrollment staff, but this is the fact that we're teaching our virtually at Paul. So we are working on it.
Right, thank you.
But yes, there's plenty of funds for that, and they are, as well as just getting more teachers' credentials in multiple subjects.
You've heard Ms. Taylor and Ms. Farrell talk about the Division Literacy Plans and VLA textbook adoptions, the VLA legislation. We are required to update our Division Literacy Plan. This plan was previously submitted and approved in December, and the suggestions were to include our updates for grades six through eight. If you remember, Ms. Farrell said that the VLA was for K three, and this upcoming year, it'll be for grades four through eight. So we have updated our plan to include our textbook adoption, our high-quality curriculum, which is going to be for the middle school. We're gonna go with StudySync. Also included in this plan are our suggestions for how we are going to provide training to our teachers in August. I've been working with Ms. Julie Evans to incorporate that into new teacher training, so our new teachers don't feel as overwhelmed. Working closely with the reading specialist at the elementary and middle school levels to help prepare for the unpacking of these standards, so that our teachers are not as overwhelmed when we introduce these new things with fidelity in the upcoming school year. I believe you have a copy of that plan. If you have any questions for me, please do not hesitate to ask. You can email. But that plan was previously approved, and we just needed to include our information for grades six through eight.
Back here, Ms. Owens. Good evening. So I have a couple of updates from the special ed department for kind of the last month. One, you all are aware that we had Special Olympics back in May, and so I just wanted to thank everybody. I don't know if people realize the amount of community support and community donations. We had over thirty-five pizzas donated for that event. We fed about three hundred children and staff, all for free. The only thing that we have to get, you know, is like paper products, things like that for Brandon's office. But other than that, everything is donated for the kids. We have a local church that donates, the Subway Cookies, different restaurants around the shore, fifteen pizzas each. I mean, you ask, and they're right there. Hardee's, a hundred cheeseburgers every time. But we have Shore Disposal that donates. A dumpster for all of those lovely paper products and all those scraps for the day. We have the Shingate Fire Department that comes and sets up the fire truck, and they hang the flag for everybody, so all the kids can walk through for the entrance. And the event is really put on by the children. We have all the high school kids. If it weren't for them, I could not get through the day. And the kids, they get volunteer hours, so when they're finished, my office makes certificates for every child, and they get volunteer hours to go towards the graduation for every child that helps. We have students from Nandua that do the meet in the fall, and then we have students from Arcadia and Shingate that do the meet in the spring. So that way, every high school is included, and all the students have an opportunity. So I wanted to share that. And then, you all are, some of you are aware, we had an audit in the special ed department seven years ago, and they switched from the RDA model to the cyclical review. So now, the State Department, because of the J-LAR audit for the state of Virginia, we now receive an audit every five years. So, our year will be next year, it'll be year five out of the five-year cyclical review. So, we have done a lot of work preparing for this audit. We have been to every school in the county. I've met with every spent teacher, guidance counselor, and one administrator in every school to review kind of expectations. We have the checklist of exactly what they're gonna be looking for, so we've been working hard to prepare for that. The teachers have a whole audit, like checklist for their files, so many of the teachers left early yesterday, and my four special ed teachers were still there, working on their files, trying to get everything in order as they close out the year. So that is something we will be working on, and then in the summer, you know, I need to go and then check the audit, you know, records and whatnot behind them to prepare for the fall, for when the DOE comes. Also, just working on purchases for the upcoming school year for our students. We're adding a sensory room at Nando Middle School for the first time, so that's something that we've been working on with the different OTs and the CODAs that we have in the division with the special ed teachers. So that'll be a new add-on for this year. We are upgrading all of the iPads in the special ed department, so they will, our students, whether it's a communication device or a learning device, they will have new iPads for the fall. And then, other things are just kind of planning this summer. We have a lot of work to do in our special ed department with our students, and just kind of planning, making sure that we make schedules and do everything we need to that's in the best interest of our students. And that is it.
Any questions for saying this? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. State Committee met on June twelfth. Prime Minister discussed the clear backpacks and the clear beverage containers, and that meeting, decision was of that group to table it until further information was available with weapons detection systems and other means of checking bags. We're going to try to get better training for everybody checks the bags. We wanna make sure everybody, consistency is what we gotta have, because right now it's not consistent from school to school. We've gotta provide them with better training. We've gotta provide them what they need as far as gloves and wands to go through the bag, we're not just reaching their hands. We do have a meeting next Thursday at ten-thirty, and hopefully come back to the board with definitive information on clear backpacks and how we should move forward. That's it.
Any questions? Thank you. I appreciate your bringing this. In Clement weather.
You know I try to keep you.
I use my teacher voice. Okay, so this, um, this is a, a regulation that I would like to see put in place for inclement weather. So if we have, in case of school delay or closure due to inclement weather or other emergency conditions, so if we call a two-hour delay because it is snow and ice, then we would like to go with a code one, schools would be closed for everyone. Code two, it would be essential staff, so that would be our maintenance people and, and people like that to clear the grounds and make it safe for our staff to come back to school. And then code three would be essential staff and eleven- and twelve-month employees, and they would arrive at ten a.m., with the thought process being that that would give the sun time to come up and, and clear off the roads a little bit and make it enough for us to get in. And I think that the reason that I am putting this forward to the board is because I think that when we are talking about the safety of our students, which is why we called delays in the first place, I think that when we, that it sends a, a negative connotation to our staff when we say that the safety of this group matters, but we're not as concerned about the safety of the adults. And so I think that in keeping with letting our staff know that we care about them and we care about their safety, that is the thought process behind this regulation. So this is for a first reading. This time, it will, it'll come up for a vote at the next meeting. We count one, we can pass this one, right?
Take that, I'll just cover it up for the butter.
Okay, thank you. So.
Good evening again. Not gonna be quite as short this time. Grab this down PowerPoint. Most of what I'm gonna talk about is the two gymnasiums, auxiliary gyms, and Punggaty, and then the, uh, kind of update some of these slides with some of the information. You can go through them pretty quick. Again, Punggaty, that's just where it's gonna be located, uh, outside the teacher parking lot, on the playground side. The next slide should show the layout, where we have the restroom, storage room, office, and everything, similar layout, it's okay, thanks, guys, and there are some more gyms. The next slide shows where we converted to the gable roof with the A roof instead of flat roof, which probably looks a lot better to most everybody. Getting to the next slide, we're gonna talk about budget. That's where we were at two-seven at the design. That was kind of where we ended up with everything, then we wanted in it, biz came in. This next slide is gonna be, okay, really small.
Oh, my.
Okay, you've got your numbers.
Yes, we did, this time they gave us.
I don't have to pull my cheat sheet out there. On this, Athens contract, Athens building contract was the lowest in two million seven twenty-seven, nine, that's not gonna say it. I did do a lot of reference checks on them, talked to a number of people they've worked for the last seven years, everything was positive. The architect that we've worked with, all the designers of these gyms, has done four or five projects with them. They got one going on right now. They said they've been a very responsive contractor. Their typical MO is kind of they finish on time and they stay within budget. So that's a plus. I think from here, we're gonna go to Nandua. And there we are, backside of the locker room, adjacent to like the storage building on the back of the building. Same thing, it's the kind of layout on this one is not much to it. There were some storage areas, and in this one, this gym, kind of the goal here is strictly be a practice-type gym. So when we go to the next slide, it's gonna show the layout interior. Next slide shows it with the A roof that you all wanted to see. Then we go to the budget, and we were two-point-six, I think it was, yeah, two-point-six, and the biz came in slightly higher than that. On the next slide, it was bigger than the last one, a little bit bigger. Two-point-six-two-four, Delmar Fisher Buildings, uh, let me go, Athens is out of Richmond, Virginia. Delmar Fisher Buildings is a lot bigger on this one, at the two-point-six-two-six. We are gonna probably not go with the add-alternative. Add-alternative for both gyms was an acoustical roof deck. Probably needed in Punggaty, because they'll be using that one more for different things on the gym, they probably have different events in there. Where this gym is gonna be strictly practice for the most part, or it'll be any type plays or musical stuff next, so the acoustical roof deck's not as important. And if somebody decides, oh, we really need it, it's fifty-four-hundred-and-fifteen dollars. So the next slide shows where we are on both of them, including everything. We come in at five-point-three-six-five million on it. We were five-point-three-six-seven on our estimated stuff, so I think that we commended where we needed to be. And I think really what our goal tonight is, is to move forward to Vogue, I guess, or say move forward and let's build two new auxiliary gyms.
We will do that when we get to our action items.
Perfect. Since this is somebody update, I know several of you wanted to know, Acme Primary, we had our mandatory three-bid meeting on June tenth. Biz are due on June twenty-sixth, the next Thursday, two p.m. We had six contractors that demanded for a three-bid. We had two additional, the first time we bid this project. I think they probably chose not to come back because they were the two high bidders previously, and they probably felt like they couldn't get to where they needed to be. Contractors who were there, I've reached out to the architects, someone reached out to me, and they've expressed that they're sharpening their pencils, that they want this job. So hopefully, we won't see a big increase from where we were with Hartons. At least that's the plan. And that's pretty much the update. After that summertime, we're working, thinking, doing stuff.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Bennett?
Thank you.
Mr. Bennett? Tuition reimbursement? Or no, technology update?
Uh, I don't need that. I'm good. Good evening, everybody. How you doing? I think this is.
That was working.
Yes. You should have in front of you the list of technology summer projects that we'll be working on this summer. This is not by no means an all-inclusive list of projects that we're working on. I'm just gonna hit a couple of them, highlight on some of them. We've got to refresh two-hundred-and-fifty-four desktops in the schools listed there on the screen. We're refreshing the student Chromebooks and classroom carts per our five-year refresh schedule. This year, we're
This year, we're also adding 50 additional smart panels in the classrooms throughout the schools. We'll put two at Tangier, three at Chicken King Elementary, and the rest of the schools will get five each. I sent a list of classrooms that need to be upgraded or refreshed to the principals, to allow it to select the five. We are limited on the funds, so we're limited on a number of classrooms we can do. Uh, I believe we would love to do all classrooms, but we just, we just can't do it. Uh, DTI program is paying for five classrooms. AMS tag is, or the tag program is paying for one at AMS. And WHO gives us a grant every year for 25,000. And this year, they asked what we wanted, and we said we wanted smart panels. So based on the cost and the amount of grant, we should get six more smart panels for them as well. Um, as Jennifer mentioned, we've got the 240 iPads to refresh instead. Uh, we're also refreshing the 200 iPads and Pre-K, all part of the five-year scheduled refresh. Um, we are removing the existing O365 email users into Google. As of right now, today, 78 of the 226 have been completed. Um, we're wanting to redesign the division and individual schools' webpages. Uh, the new theme, new outlook, it'll still be a content managed system. We're basically just template-driven, we just put the data in there. Um, I believe we're gonna wait until our public information officers onboard to give input on how, how they want it to look. Um, we're also piloting a streaming system here for the school board meetings. Brian has in the back, uh, he's been piloting it, planning with it. All the equipment that I listed above that were refreshed, we have to e-waste slash recycle. Uh, we use a vendor out of North Carolina who comes and gets us, comes and gets the equipment and we receive a check for that equipment recycled. Uh, we are gonna be removing, uh, the remaining data center hardware at the school board office. 6/27, which is next Friday, and our backup date is 7/11, which will be the Friday after July 4th break, in case we just can't get it done. It's a total outage. That's why we had to wait till the end of school to do this. Basically, it's ISP circuit, circuit through all the schools, our firewall, our web filter, and, uh, and we're only on a Friday, of course. Uh, we're refreshing the Canon MFDs, the big multi-functional, uh, copiers, scanners, printers. We're adding a threat system at Akimak, Punggatik, and Kitik. And that's based on the overages at those three schools we're printing to the two ones that we had in the previous, previous contract. Um, we're supporting facility projects, moving technology, I have areas for work to happen, moving people, so forth. Uh, we're supporting many, many projects, summer instructional programs, some PDs, new teacher orientation, migrant program, and also we're checking in and cleaning and touching all the Chromebooks and the carts to make sure we're good to go for next school year. And that's all I have. Anything for me?
Yes.
Thank you for that presentation. Um, when you were saying about the streaming services, what kind of platform are we looking at?
The device that we're, uh, we, we are looking at is, is an owl, um, right? It's a owl floor. Uh, it's a, it's a, it's like a video conference system, and what we have learned back there during this, uh, closed session was basically you stream it through like Zoom or Beats, and you send a link out, and I'm assuming this part here, to the public, and they would basically join the meeting. They would have, they wouldn't be able to speak or do anything. They would just be able to listen and see.
So it'll be a visual as well?
It will be a visual, is what it does. It, it, we would sit it like in the middle there on a tripod, and as you, it does a panoramic view.
It's got four cameras.
Okay, okay.
It's got four cameras and it's able to, whoever is speaking, it can handle, basically, that camera comes on and shows that person.
Yes.
But we'll be viewed all the time.
Yes.
Uh, and then the other question regarding the Chromebooks. Some people were saying that next year, are the students gonna be allowed to take them home, or is it just gonna be strictly used at school?
Not in elementary or middle schools, high schools. That's the decision. In the high schools, they can take them home. Elementary and middle, they're staying in the schools.
So if they're staying in the school, um, will it be assigned to a student, or will it be assigned to classrooms?
They're assigned to the carts and the teachers' classrooms. Every, every core that starts on classrooms or 36 anywhere apart, that they'll be stored.
So hopefully they're responsible as a student or a staff or controlling it?
It's the responsibility of the school and the classroom. Right? The students are no longer responsible. We want to hope it's gonna prevail, the great fits.
So what happens with a virtual, I mean, or we have the snow day?
Yeah, the ITC, the instructional team is working on, and correct me if I'm wrong, like not learning packets, but something that will be available for the teachers to select, to send home with the students.
Should it be like handwritten type of?
Um, I'm, I'm assuming yes.
How, how would that work for a snow day?
Well, they're supposed to plan ahead. You know, we all see the weather, it's all forecasted. If we know the snow day's coming, well, we should start preparing our learning packets.
So it won't be virtual, then, or just?
There really is no more, uh, I mean, the elementary, middle schools, from what I have heard, doesn't really do a whole lot of virtual days on the computers. They're assigned, assigned to, a lot has been learning packets. That was the direction it was given earlier this year, uh, by Karen and Katie.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay? Any more questions? Sure? All right, y'all have a good evening.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Tuition reimbursement. Move up to my mic, it's working.
Okay, so, um, this is another regulation that I would like to put in place that I requested the board briefly putting in place. This regulation would allow, would provide tuition assistance up to $1,500 per degree credit our college course, uh, for no more than two courses per year for our staff. And that would be working towards a degree toward it to teach. As a condition of receiving educational assistance, they would agree to teach for two years in the area of study when they fin, after they finish their degree. And if that was not completed, then there would, they would need to pay that back.
Would this also be for like maybe a current teacher seeking a master's degree?
Yes.
Do, do we have this now, but it's just a lesser amount?
Two every five?
Two every five years.
Two every five? Five years?
It's two every five years. I'm saying that we would give them essentially three, three thousand for the year. So 1,500 in the fall, 1,500 in the spring. And that, that's anybody that's working towards a, a teaching degree. So secretaries, anybody who wanted to work towards teaching degree, who want to help pay for it, stay here and teach with us.
Thank you. Human, human resources update.
Okay, uh, as you can see here, uh, just another, uh, like I've done for you in the past about once a month, the vacancy report. Would like to, uh, also during my, uh, HR update, uh, let you know that we are recommending, uh, the teacher salaries scale as was presented last week. We did send you some, uh, information that you requested, uh, by email, uh, about some of the information that was requested the last board meeting. You did get that in your email. Um, I have a question.
Yes, so, um, so you're changing it for the, uh, for the 30-plus years here as far as the better time, or?
No, we, we, we're recommending that it is approved, continue to be approved as was approved last, uh, last meeting. No change.
No change for the background teaching.
That is, that's our recommendation. Um, one big announcement, uh, we, uh, we're down to one, uh, special education vacancy. We were actually working on this for the last couple of days. And, uh, we did one update to the list. We did get in one resignation today, and it was, uh, one more elementary teacher. Any questions?
So I, I do have a question, going back to salaries. So we're saying that at 30-year teacher, 30 years plus, they're gonna be making the 76,415.
Yes, sir.
So we're showing that percent change. How does that work? 13 and a half, 10.7?
Yeah, as you can see here, it's being, uh, presented now. You have, uh, your 30-year teachers, we went over this, uh, during the last meeting.
Can I keep the mic going over again?
Yeah, sure. It's a 13 and a half percent change for a 30-year teacher. Uh, our teachers with 31 to 32 years experience got a 10.7% raise. Uh, anyone this upcoming year with a, with 33 years experience got an 8% raise. And you can see the numbers of teachers that we have, 34-plus years, 4.4%. And then, um, down at the bottom there, you can see, uh, there was some, um, uh, discussion about, uh, the grandfathering in of some of our older, you know, our teachers that have been around for a while, uh, with, with, uh, over 30 years experience. You can see what their salaries would be if they all got 13 and a half, uh, ranging from 76,415 to 83,042 with 34-plus years experience. And as, as a note at the bottom, you can see that our middle, elementary, middle assistant principals start at 66,875, and our, um, elementary principals and high school assistant principals start at 71,891. So we feel like those salaries would be pushing into those administrative salaries, which then we're gonna get, um, some discrepancies there that we would then have to go back and fix as well. So, um, that's our recommendation to s, to stay with, um, the salary scale as it was presented last, we, last school board meeting.
Question?
Sir?
If they're currently making more than, it means they have to complete cut, or they're gonna stay at the current salary?
No one's, no one's getting a pay cut at all.
I'm just saying if there were somebody getting paid more than what's current 74, 76,415.
No, no, last year, the top was, was not over, over 76,000. The top of the scale was 73 and change, I believe.
No, I'm just, I'm just like saying, and I'm looking at this in front of me, it's kind of put me, as a 30-year instructor, it don't show me how I need to be here in further coming up at the max with everybody else. That's, I mean, yes, we discussed this, but now I'm looking at it and seeing it and writing. It's made me feel, a 31-plus years, why am I gonna continue to teach when I'm gonna have the same amount the rest of my year as a 30-year?
No, if you, if you have 31 and 32, you got 10% this year. 33, you got 8%. It's only when you get to 34-plus, you go down to 4.4. Plus, we have a longevity, if you've been with the county for a number of years, I believe it starts at 15, correct me if I'm wrong, about 20 years, if you've been with the county for 20 years, and then 25, and then 30-plus, we, we add a longevity bonus to, uh, to stipend for this as well.
But that doesn't go towards your retirement, that's something.
Correct, that doesn't go.
I think what Mr. Wade was saying, though, if somebody reaches that 30-year, and they just wanna quit and retire, why would they wanna continue on 31, 32, 33, 34 years if their maximum will be at 76,415? Knowing that, when I talk about people now, we're talking about, uh, you know, next year.
This, this would be also, I mean, we, we also have, or all of our classified staff have 30 steps. So the same can be said about our classified step, uh, staff. All of our administrative staff have 25 steps. Because we, when we built that out, we figured you're probably gonna be a teacher for, you know, a few years before you become an administrator, so we can make that a little bit smaller. So, I mean, we were trying to stay consistent when we, when we worked through this with our other employees, classified employees, administrative employees, to where we have a, um, you know, once you get to a certain number of years, that's, you get, unfortunately, that's the cap. And then you get your coal every year instead of your stub and your coal.
So it's something that the board would like to explore. We can take a look at the administrative scales and adjust those, because that's what we would have to do if we have, we can't, like, so teachers making more than administrators is a problem as well. So if we want to, uh, decide to, noted. So if we want to, um, take a look at that for next year, we can. Um, I, this year, we've already got contracts going out. Um, but like I said, if the board would like to explore this further, we can definitely take a look at administrative scales for next year and look at tacking on those extra years.
That sounds like a good plan.
Any other questions?
I'm, I'm, I'm still processing. We chose 13.5 as opposed to 10.7, or 8% or 4.4?
No, 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 no. What, what, what I was trying to convey here is, the teachers, if you're a teacher and you're going into your 30th year, okay, you're getting a 13.5% raise. If you're a teacher here in Akimak County, and you're going into either your 31st or 32nd year, you, you will get a 10.7% raise. If you are a teacher in Akimak County and you're going into your 33rd year, you're getting an 8% raise. But if you have 34 years or better, you got a 4.4% raise.
I apologize, I was referring to the second chart.
The second chart was, um, that was a proposal that was made by a speaker, and we were asked to look into, uh, the feasibility of that proposal. And, uh, so this is what their proposal would look like, giving 30, 30 to 34-plus-year teachers across the board a 13 and a half percent raise, and that's what their salary would be. And again, that's why we put the note at the bottom that had push into the administrator salaries, when the administrators work 12 months. So you, you also got to figure into the teachers work a 10-month, um, school year, and our administrators work a 12-month school year. So there, those salaries are gonna be pushing into those scales, and it's gonna make it unequitable for the, for our administrators. So I think by doing that, we're creating a problem, but we can certainly explore our administrative scales of moving into next year.
Okay, you got it?
Good. Anybody else? All right. Thank you.
Next up, the superintendent update.
Um, I just wanted to let the board know that tomorrow, we will be having a CIP presentation at Nando High School in the auditorium. We do have, our administrators will be part of that, and we have invited teachers to that. If you, if you would like to come and join as well, um, feel free to come to that. Uh, we did, I did talk to Julie, and we have a couple of people that are currently not licensed to teach. They have the bachelor's degree, so we can get them what's called a local license. We can only do that for 5% of our people. So we are gonna be looking at, some of those people who are not licensed, we're gonna go ahead and get them a local license that gives them a year to get certified. So we'll be working on that this coming week.
Um, next, we're gonna move into our action items, signature authorization. So the recommendation is that in the event that the superintendent is unable to sign or unauthorized documents, it's only Ms. Taylor who's signed.
Is there a motion?
Yes, I'm looking at your motion.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I approve that we approve the superintendent's recommendation for that only in Karen Taylor to be the, um, personnel that will be able to sign.
Second. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The clear backpack policy. Can I? I have a clear backpack policy. Virginia Department of Health, MOU.
Hi, everybody.
I think this probably shouldn't have been on your discussion items, but go ahead, Ms. Miles. Or, Blair, sorry.
That's okay. Um, so, Dr. Miller asked me just to put this together really briefly for you. Um, it's a, we're up for renewal with our MOU with the, um, Virginia Department of Health for our closed point of distribution. Um, just to give you some history, next slide. Um, during COVID is when we first started our MOU with them, um, and that was signed to provide vaccines for all of our Akimak County employees. Um, so what is really the purpose of a closed? So what is really the purpose of a closed MOU? So in the event of a widespread biological event, we, Acomet County Public Schools and Eastern Shore Health District will cooperate for the deployment of dispensing of prophylactic medications and supplies made available from the CDC's Strategic National Stockpile. So that would be things like vaccines or antibiotics. So I'm using a lot of acronyms, so let's go over some definitions. Closed POD is operated by an organization and is not open to the public, so we would have to be, to man the operation, basically. The VDH would give us the supplies, but we would have to take care of the distribution. Point of dispensing is basically just a mass dispensing site that can provide the medications or vaccines to protect us from the biological threats. So let's get down to brass tacks here. Responsibilities. Eastern Shore Health Department would provide draft protocols and assist us with response plans. They'll meet with us to review the receipt and dispensing plans, notify us of any state or federal planning changes, coordinate request and receipt of medications from the CDC, and coordinate delivery and pickup. Our responsibilities include providing population estimates, so how many employees and family members do we have? We need to develop a medication receipt plan, develop plans and identify internal resources to support the dispensing of medications. We're responsible for proper receipt and security, secure storage of medications, and we need to follow all the protocols as directed by the Health Department. And the last slide is just a sample of what it would look like for a distribution. Any questions? I know it's a lot. You all have a copy of the MOU?
I do not. I do not.
So any of these vaccinations that would leave to be given, these wouldn't be all, wouldn't be mandatory?
No, sir, no, sir. This is just, you know, if we had an anthrax attack, you know, the goal is to get everything distributed to everyone everywhere within forty-eight hours. So if we signed the MOU, then the safety committee and I would come up with a plan and can ju, with the assistance of the Health Department to make sure we have security taken care of, that, you know, we have, you know, so that we can take care of our own, basically. They'll provide it, and then voluntarily, if you want, you know, you would like to come get medicine for you and your family members, then you come get it, if, you know, but if you don't, then you just stay home.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else? No, okay, thanks.
We'll bring it on back next time. Thank you. Clear backpack policy.
Madam Chair, I motion that, or excuse me, move that we table the back, clear backpack policy until next meeting?
Till we have more.
Okay, till.
In that plan.
Yeah, till we have more of a plan.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The BSBA policy updates.
Just, you can make a motion to accept them as presented, or you can make a motion to approve part of them, or approve them and pull one out, however you want to do it.
Or do we, can we just do the amendment where it includes that the autism training is required?
So you can make the motion to accept as presented with the inclusion of autism training being required annually.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the policies as presented with the amendment for the autism to be done annual.
Be required.
Required to do annually.
Second. Motion and a second to approve policies with the amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the auxiliary gyms.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the auxiliary gyms for the cost as presented this evening for Punggatig Gym as well as the Nando Gym.
So there is a motion and a second to use Athens for Punggatig and Marla by Quinn Builders for Nando High School. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. School board member comments? Mr. Fydell? Dr. Johnson?
I just wanted to thank Ms. Blair for her quick response to my, I think it was attendance vaccine. Where is that?
I, I attended the graduations, and they were very nice, and I'm very proud of all of our graduates.
I have nothing this evening.
I just got no comments, but I just have to make a motion that we move the public comment from the bottom up to the top. All I need is a second so we can vote on this.
This should have been listed under action items, but I'll entertain your motion. There is a motion and a second to move public comment. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You want us to fold the board? Yeah. Oh, come on. We'll record by the whole board. Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
No.
Someone here with the public comment paper. Well, the chair makes the agenda, so it's really not a voteable item. Ms. Taylor will now read the public comment.
Identify yourself by name and nine-one-one address. Two, speakers are limited to three minutes. Three, individuals may reserve or transfer their time to another speaker. Four, specific personnel matters must not be initiated at a public meeting. Five, speakers cannot be abusive, threatening, or use profanity. Six, specify the nature of your remarks. Seven, speakers who have previously spoken on a subject for public comment should not be allowed to readdress the board during the same public comment period. Eight, specific questions should be resolved prior to the meeting by contacting the superintendent or the appropriate staff member. Nine, anyone who would like to present a PowerPoint presentation for public comment has to present the presentation twenty-four hours in advance or reviewed by the staff for appropriateness. And ten, all questions shall be directed to the chairperson at her discretion, who will, at her discretion, solicit a response from the appropriate staff member.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Burke.
Good evening. My name is Colby Burford, and my address is eight one two eight B V Road, Shenkotag, Virginia, and I'm a current kindergarten teacher at Shenkotag Elementary School. I am here this evening to express my concern with the recent decision made in the area of special education. It has come to my attention that a decision has been made that recalls yet another area of inconsistency with regards to special education at Shenkotag Elementary. While I can appreciate that in education, tough decisions and changes must be made at times, this is not something that will be beneficial for the students of Shenkotag Elementary. While we may be a small school, our students are just as worthy and important as students in every other school in Acomet County. The students of CES have had no consistency in the area of special education since I began teaching there six years ago. We have had six different special education teachers, not including the teacher in the new self-contained classroom. Special education students require the most consistency and support, and I do know this from personal experience with my own brother. My brother was in special education from preschool until he graduated high school. He was able to have consistent teachers that only changed when he moved from building to building, elementary to middle, middle to high, et cetera. This allowed him to build relationships with his teachers, and his teachers were able to help him grow and be successful. We cannot expect our students to be consistent in their progress and behavior when they are unable to build a relationship with their special education teacher. I know students who I taught in kindergarten who have had four different special education teachers, and they are not even in the fourth grade yet. How can they be successful when every year they have to start from scratch and learn how to trust a brand-new person? It is one thing for them to have a new classroom teacher to get to know each year, but to have a brand-new special education teacher as well is extremely difficult. Diana R. Williams, founder of the Sp. Educated Leaders Society. When educators are inconsistent, even unintentionally, it often shows up in student behavior. A student who suddenly becomes defiant or disengaged may simply be responding to a system that keeps changing the rules. Consistency helps reduce that mental load and reinforces boundaries, builds confidence, and provides the predictability students with disabilities need to thrive. This is an incredibly important topic for me, as I have a huge heart for special education and fight for my students' rights every day. While I understand the hard decisions must be made at times, I would like you all to consider the importance of consistency in special education. Please think about the needs of students at CES and the relationships that they have already established and have, that have led to their success. Our students matter. Our students are valued. Our students deserve respect, consistency, and proper support. If this change is made, I believe every parent of every student who has a special education service that they receive should receive a written justification for this decision. Our CES families deserve to know why their children's needs will be adversely affected. Thank you.
Thank you. Toni Brady.
Yep. Hi, I'm Toni Br, I'm tall. Toni Brady, my address is seven zero five five Wayne Road, Chigatay. What else was there? That's it. That's it, okay. So it says, "Good evening, my name is Toni Brady. My daughter Katie is going to be a fifth grader next year at Chigatay Elementary. We received news last night due to restructuring and realignments that both licensed and highly qualified special education teachers would be moved to Kegatay from Chigatay. This is more than sad news in our home. My daughter receives special education services from the school and has a separate 504 from being harmed in the first grade. She has worked with our special ed teacher for the past two years. She has taught my daughter to so much more than just reading and math. She has taught my daughter to trust teachers again. She has lessened the impact from her trauma, to trust herself, and know that she is capable in learning and how to love school. Katie actually wants to be a teacher when she grows up, just like her favorite teacher." Katie passed her reading SOL this year in fourth grade with a major jump in points because of this teacher. Where she was not at grade level, but she is doing grade-level work now, which is, in my opinion, amazing. By pulling the teacher from my daughter, this will call, will cause unnecessary regression and harm. The relocation of a licensed special education teacher does not relieve the district of its responsibilities to fill the IEP, which I know it will continue. But reducing or interrupting services due to staffing decisions places a student at risk for academic regression, social emotional harm, and legal noncompliance. It's not only educationally unsound, but also exposes the district to potential due-process complaints and state complaints for failure to implement IEPs in good faith. It is understandable that staff and personal shifts do happen, but these decisions must never come at the expense of the students. I was told there is a plan in place by numerous administrators today in my eighteen thousand phone calls. I had, "You need to talk to this person, you need to talk to this person, that one's responsible, that one's responsible." No one could give me a direct answer. It's very frustrating. I just know that I want my daughter to thrive, and the teacher is allowing her to thrive and grow, and it's a shame that this restructuring and realignment has, has going to affect all the kids I work with her. She just doesn't work with the special ed kids. She notices the ones that are struggling and pulls them aside and gives them a pet talk or an extra, "Hey, you got this. Let me sit down and work with you." She needs to say where she's at. She's loved, and she's needed, and she's wanted. So with that, please keep my teacher there. Thank you.
I'm George Hall. I live at Two Gray Street in Hancock, and I'm going to yield my time to my wife on our Thanksgiving voting anniversary.
Happy anniversary.
Thank you. I am so nervous.
Don't look at the clock. Don't look at the clock.
So my name is Catherine Hall. My address is Two Gray Street in Hancock. I'm one of the four mental health counselors serving the students and staff of the Acomet County Public Schools. On April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, I addressed this board to share the scope of our work. Mental health counselors provide individual and group counseling for students and staff, respond to crises, conduct suicide risk assessments, participate in behavior threat assessments, and attend IEP reentry NTSS, FIP and SBIT meetings. We are the first called when a crisis occurs very often outside of school hours. We support schools through traumatic events such as fires and the loss of students. We often complete multiple suicide risk assessments and are part of a behavior threat assessment team in a single day. We do our work without designated private spaces in several buildings, working from storage rooms, life skills rooms, auditoriums, cafeterias, or even walking the halls to meet students in need. At that April meeting, District Two board member said, "These ladies are awesome. I can't thank them enough for what they do." The same board member added in closing remarks, "Shout out to the mental health counselors again. I know the kids, they are struggling out there, and we as a community need, we, and we need to, as a community, be there for them, and they are doing an awesome job." Since the Evergreen Compensation study, we have had serious concerns. Before the study, we were aligned with teachers on their pay scale, as are the school counselors. Following the study, the mental health counselors and ten-month social workers' pay scales were reduced, despite the study indicating that so, school social workers' pay scale needed improvement. Our new salary scale starts at forty-four, one-four, nearly ten thousand dollars less than a starting teacher. Since September, we have requested clarification through the proper channels. We were told to wait for the interim superintendent, who resigned. We asked again, and we were told that a consultant would be hired, and we would communicate with them directly. Then we were informed our concerns would be passed along. We discovered that a consultant had been hired, but we have never received an update. We have continued to ask, we have, we have continued to ask how the study found we should make less with the cost of living increasing daily. In response, we researched other school districts, including those in the study, and discovered many do not employ mental health counselors. Instead, they contract services or have positions under different titles such as a student support specialist, youth and family specialist, social work specialist, or mental health specialist, who are compensated at significantly higher rates and recognized as specialists. We also consulted with VDOE. According to them, we are classified as specialized student support personnel, as my current contract does, meets me as support personnel. This category includes non-classroom educators who work with students, families, teachers, and staff to provide school-based physical, social, mental, and, mental and emotional, wait a minute, school-based physical, social, emotional, and mental health services. These professionals help remove barriers to learning, create positive conditions in schools, and support students' academic success. Their work includes education, counseling, consultation, and individual assessment, which reflects the daily duties of mental health counselors and ACPS. This classification is clearly outlined in our contract, job description, and fully aligns with our roles. Included in your packet is VDOE guidance, a copy of my contract, as well as my job description, and one of a student support specialist from another school district. In February, the ACPS website updated the salaries for classified positions. I've included that information in your packet. Mental health counselors and ten-month social workers are considered a C-16 with a starting salary of forty-four, one-four. Then there is another. Then there is another C sixteen that does not list a title with the position's starting salary at fifty-eight thousand, three-hundred-seventy-six dollars. Why is there another C sixteen position with a salary increase of seventeen thousand, nine-hundred-sixty-two more dollars than ours? There are many things that we do not understand, and we've asked for answers this entire school year. It is very disheartening to me, the other three mental health counselors, and the ten-month social worker who work hard every day to support the emotional well-being of students and staff. We respectfully ask that this board revisit the Evergreen Study and reassess our classification and compensation. Our pay scale was reduced without clear justification, while other positions received substantial increases, with the highest being almost nineteen thousand dollars. We support administration, school counselors, and other staff, guiding them on how to address different situations daily and support the well-being of students, yet we are not compensated or classified in alignment with our responsibilities. Please review the information that I have provided to you, including job descriptions, salary comparisons, and relevant V D O E guidance. I urge you to have a discussion and reconsider the salaries and classification of the ten-month mental health counselors and social worker. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Tamela Hunt.
Good evening. My name is Tamela Hunt. I reside at two-nine-six-nine-three Pokes Road, Prince of Van, Maryland. I was hired as the second social worker on nine-eleven-twenty-three in my contract listing as support personnel. I met with H R on ten-nine-twenty-four after the compensation study, at which time I was told that I, along with the mental health counselors, were overpaid. I was told that there were twenty-one positions that were greater than twenty percent behind market, and they had to be paid. I responded, and social worker was on that list, which was followed up with an, "Oh, they were? I will have to look into that." I also informed H R that we should be classified as specialists, support personnel. From that point on, I sent multiple emails, most of which went unanswered until I sent a follow-up email requesting a response. After such time, I was told, "Wait until we get a new superintendent or a consultation firm was hired. I will let them know your concerns." We are on our third superintendent, and I am still not acknowledged as, or paid as a social worker, and nothing has been done to address the concerns that we had about our classification. After the compensation study, a lead social work position was created, and I do realize that when there is a need, that there, the salary may be a little greater. However, I cannot understand how there is a twenty thousand, eight-hundred-eighty-one-dollar difference in the starting salary of a social worker versus a lead social worker, and a thirty-one thousand, three-hundred-twenty-one-dollar difference in the ending salary. According to the scale, I have already reached my maximum salary. There was a special scale made for social, social workers slash mental health counselors, which is a C sixteen. However, there is also another scale which is a C sixteen that does not identify who or what they are. I have to ask why we were not placed on that scale, or why was I not placed on a scale with or for social workers? I would like to place emphasis on the literature that was provided by the mental health counselor who spoke before me, supporting us being classified as specialists, which includes, but is not limited to, school counselors, social workers, and psychologists, to name a few. To the best of my knowledge, some of these positions are recognized as specialists, and they work an extra ten days during the summer. In closing, I would like to say that I come to work every day and give a hundred percent. I go above and beyond, and I would like my true job title to be acknowledged and to be paid accordingly. I have included documentation, and humbly request that you look at the documentation and make a decision based on the facts. Thank you.
Asden Valden.
Good evening. My name is Asden Valden. I am located at sixty-three-eighty Vacation Park Lane on Shigatay Island. I am here in regards to the movement of the special education teachers at Shigatay Elementary School and how it will affect my autistic son. He is currently in the self-contained classroom. He was at Kegatay Elementary School. They moved him to Shigatay with the movement of the, what is that called? The districts with the redistricting with the kids. And in that movement, the first couple of weeks of school were quite rough because it was a new environment with newer teachers. We were lucky enough to have his old teacher follow him. Unfortunately, she will not be there this year coming for him, and I can tell you now that that's going to cause very many behavioral issues, not just with him, but other children that are in that self-contained classroom. Children with autism and special needs do well with consistency, and unfortunately, with Akimac County, since we've started his school journey, the lack of consistency is unreal. He's had four different teachers since he started. We've been very lucky with him, but we've, you can look back on his documentation with the school board. We've had very many meetings on the issues that we've had with his behavior because of the movement and the inconsistency. It's something that I truly think needs to be looked into, because I don't think that the special education department is being taken seriously in the fact of the lack of staffing for the kids, and I think that that comes to a lot of the issues with the consistency. That's all I have. I hope that you guys take that into account when moving teachers, of how it affects the children, because I don't think that that is placed. I think that you're looking at the scope of, "Oh, this person needs to be moved here because it's cheaper." It, it doesn't work that way for our kids. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Javon Knox. I live at twenty-seven-three-seven-six Whitesnake Road, Parksley, Virginia. Two concerns tonight with me. But first of all, I want to acknowledge how the persons who have presented budgets and plans, they've done an awesome job. This is not something that I take lightly, and I don't think that they take lightly. And I'm hoping that the board does consider the work that is put into it and abide by it accordingly. We can do better. There's always work for us to do, and we have had a rough year. The school year that's just ended. We've had a rough year. We don't want to repeat some of those things. My one, one of my concerns is, of course, the salaries of teachers. Teachers, to me, are always underpaid, not ever going to get paid what they're worth. However, we don't need to start off with giving, starting off saying, "You can get this, and this one's going to get that, and that one's going to get that." It needs to be a consistent pattern of payment of salary, and we need to stay with that. The other thing, of course, is with the special education teacher. I'm hoping that we're in line with the I D E A and that we're not, again, bordering on something that is illegal or not in, 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 not as the law has said. I'm reading up on that and trying to understand that a little better myself. But when you take these teachers and you move them from the classroom, where the students who already have a problem have become accustomed to that person, that person is helping that student, that child loves that teacher, and they get moved around, there's no sense in a, in a child having four different teachers, especially a child with autism. And we need to consider how we do these things. Money is not everything, and I do believe a lot of this has to do with money, but money is not everything. These students are already behind the eight ball, and they need a little more push, not only from their parents, but from this school board system, that they will progress, do better, and become profitable citizens in not only the county of Akimac, but wherever they are able to go. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Board will now go to the closed session. Is there a motion to go to the closed?
Madam Chair, the School Board Committee includes me for the purpose of eight personnel matters for discussion as permitted under subdivision eight-point-one subsection two-thirty-seven-eleven of the Code of Virginia, consisting of the following. Three professional appointments, one long-term substitute contract, five classified appointments, one part-time appointment, one professional reservation, one classified reservation, two non-renewable, and twenty-nine status changes. Also, student matters as permitted under subdivision eight-point-two, subsection two-point-two dash thirty-seven-eleven of the Code of Virginia, consisting of the following issues. Two re-admission cases, two long-term suspensions, and one expulsion.
Second. Motion in a second to go in closed session. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're now closed session.